So wonderful to see everybody here. Mr. Shealy and Mr. Fulmer won't be able to be with us tonight because of another commitment, but we do have a quorum so we're able to continue doing the business of the people. Item number one on our agenda is an update and feedback on the revised property maintenance and nuisance codes.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. You know, we have been working the last several months on proposed draft nuisance and property maintenance codes. And, you know, gradually those codes have evolved and I think y'all have it down to a level that, you know, you're comfortable moving forward with, but you really wanted some additional input from residents before you started a process to adopt it potentially. And the solution that we came up with as a group was to post it on the website and to make it known that, you know, the ordinance was there and provide an opportunity for comments to be submitted through the website. And we received comments from, or feedback from eight individuals. And I think a copy of that was, was sent to y'all and you probably noticed in reading those, the comments we received, at least those we received, were positive about the ordinance and encouraging that we move forward. I know there was one comment that submitted that referenced the fact that, you know, we refer owners and occupants separately and that that potentially could be an issue and we need to look at that. And that was, that was purposeful. And the idea there is sometimes you get into situations where there is, and I hate to say pointing of fingers to use like a euphemism, but, but, you know, you've got two parties and they're assigning responsibility to the other. And so that ordinance gives us the flexibility to, within the ordinance, to be able to respond to that and be effective in terms of code. You know, I don't know if y'all are comfortable at this point moving forward, if you wanted to have any more discussion of the ordinance. It's in the state that it was in the last time we reviewed it, which was middle of last month.
How long has it been on the website?
We put it on the website right after that council meeting and that one. Yeah.
Yeah, that's long enough.
And we thought it was possible we might get a little more feedback than that. But, you know, it was helpful the feedback we used.
Other questions? Anyone? Well, I personally think we can move, move forward. I'd, I'd like to see it on the next agenda then if possible.
On the 70th? Okay. Will do.
Cause I've had, again, I continue to get people come up and asking for some type of relief from some of the things that go on around them. All right. Item number two is a discussion of a proposal to allow the keeping of hens, not roosters, as conditional use within residential zoning districts subject to minimum standards.
Sure. And I can take the lead on this and Katie works, is working with us and she may have some comments she'd like to provide as well. But, you know, we took a stab at some regulations related to chickens, but also other animals back, it's probably what, six months ago?
Probably about nine months, probably.
Nine months ago? You know, we had a, had an issue down in the Fairview community and related to the keeping of animals on properties. And right now, and, and that, that ordinance was a little more comprehensive, it was a little broader. And I know there were some concerns expressed by council that maybe that was maybe too much, too fast. And I think y'all had some legitimate concerns about it. And at that point, we moved to some other priorities that you had, code enforcement was one of those. We have, you know, since identified a potential issue with the ordinance that y'all might want to address. Some would say it's a weakness, but definitely an issue. Where right now we allow the keeping of chickens and specifically hens in the R2 zone, but in our other residential zones, we do not allow them. And when you look at many municipalities and, and I don't have a list of those here in front of me, but I know Newberry is one. I remember this issue came up in Ervo and they actually held a advisory referendum during one November election to get feedback from residents. But we've got many municipalities that actually allow chickens, so long as it's limited to hens, no roosters. And then there are standards that apply to how the chickens are housed and where the housing is located and how you deal with the waste and, you know, all down the line. And so our thought was this might be something you'd like to look at because it's allowed within the city of Newberry. But in large portions of the area of the county that's owned residential, it's not allowed, which seemed maybe a little inconsistent, you know, potentially. So we've got, what we did is we pulled out the provisions in the previous ordinance that applied only to chickens. And we prepared it in an ordinance form and it sent that to you on the chance of a meeting. And what this would allow, like Chairman Johnson mentioned in the title of the item, is that it would allow the keeping of chickens in residential zones other than R2, where chickens are a permitted use. You know, we have three types of uses. We have permitted uses, which Katie and her staff can sign off on. They're permitted by the ordinance and in some cases have some standards that are applicable. Then we have conditional uses. And conditional uses also were approved by permit by Katie and her staff. But there are certain conditions that have to be met in order for the permit to be issued. So every box has to get a check. If every box gets checked, then she can issue the permit or her staff. If not, then it's not issued. And then we have special exception uses that are very similar to that, but they go to the board of zoning appeals. More notice, a public hearing is held, it's more due process, you know, it's just a beefed up, more robust version of conditional. So in this particular case, what we're proposing to y'all to consider, or at least as a starting point, that in R2, chickens would be permitted like they currently are. And then in our other residential zones, so RS, RSV, RSN and RG, they would be allowed as a conditional use. And then what you'll see in the ordinance or the provisions in front of you is you see the conditions. And so all of those conditions have to be met in order for a conditional use permit to be issued for, for the chickens. And if y'all don't mind, I'll just kind of run through these real quick and give you a summary. So what this would allow would be the keeping of chickens as an accessory use on properties that we zone single-family residential. So it can't be the primary use. It would be accessory to a residential, uh, single-family use. The structure itself, if there is a structure, would be an accessory structure. So it'd have to meet all the requirements for accessory structures in terms of housing and chickens. You wouldn't have the ability if you had multiple lots to have the chicken coop or the housing of the chickens on one of the other lots. It'd have to be on the lot where the primary structure is located. So, you know, that's going to be the house. I mean, it's just another way of saying where the house is. You'd be limited to no more than six. So we would, under this form, and you, you may want to set that number somewhere else, but under this draft version, six would be the limit that you could have. You, you'd have sanitation and health and housing requirements that would have to be met for the chickens. And in the case of the enclosure or structure, it can be no closer than 25 feet from the side or rear property lines. Now, one thing that we've discussed since emailing this out to you is that, you know, some of the property in the county that's owned residential is on the lakes. Either on Lake Greenwood or on Lake Murray. And the way we handle the rear setback on the lakes is a little different than how it's handled elsewhere. There's a minimum setback of 50 feet. And so, you know, when you kind of, you look at the language in here, you'll notice 50 feet at least when it applies to the, where the waste is stored. But on the lake, what we do, when you're already building, you, you could either be demoing an existing structure and building a new one. Or you could be, this is a vacant, you know, piece of property that's never had a structure on it. The setback is really determined based on an average of the setbacks of the structures around you. So if you've had lots that have developed already and you've got a lot and you're wanting to build on it, then the setback you meet is really a function of the setbacks of the existing structures. And so the way that language is written in the ordinance, and Katie can add some more detail, maybe your detail, maybe you're correct me if I say anything that's incorrect. The, in the case of both the primary structure, the home, and in this case, the accessory structure being the enclosure for the chickens, both of those would have to be behind the average setback, which again, in the case of the lake, would be some of these other lake homes that have already been built. So it wouldn't just be the, the house that would have to be behind that setback. The coops too, or the enclosure, or whatever it is. So, so the setback's going very, and it's gonna be more stringent on the lake than it would be in other areas of the county in most cases. So the, the ordinance, you know, has the, the, the 25-foot setback from side rear unless we have the average with, with a lake property. And then, and the minimum on the lakes, 50 feet from the rear.
If the minute, so if, if this, your lot that you're building on, or wanting to put a building on, if there's not a current structure on the left or the right, then you're at the minimum 50. But if you have houses on both sides of your lot, then you're the average. So it's 50 or, or the average.
The greater of the two.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. So the 25 feet you see in here would not be applicable on lake property. At a minimum, it's gonna be 50.
Correct.
And would that be added into this if we decide to move forward with it?
We, if we made a modification like this afternoon, so we can get y'all to re-modify that, records that, that will be included in there.
Okay.
And what Katie did is she added a reference to the section number where, where we've got the language instead of duplicating it entirely. The chickens can't be free-range, so they can't run free, you know, they're, they're subject to an enclosure. You know, coop, pen, or similar enclosure. They can't, it can't be attached to the residential structure or garage, so this would be a freestanding enclosure for, for the chickens. We've got language in there about feeding, clean water, shelter, health, and sanitary conditions. You know, I mentioned already that it's an accessory use, so it can't be the primary on the lot, so that you couldn't put chickens on a lot where you didn't have them. And so it would have to be accessory to the, to the premises. It's made clear too, that the enclosures have to be in the rear yard. So I mean, they couldn't be placed in the side yard or in the front yard, they have to be in the backyard. And then, you know, also, you can imagine, I mean, rodents, wild birds, predators, I mean, you know, you can, you can have situations like that with chickens, so they would have to be in a secure enclosure where they wouldn't be susceptible to those things. So that would be another conditional use standard that would have to be met. We wouldn't allow the slaughter of chickens, at least under the provision of ordinance, you couldn't do that on, on your residential property. You know, there's language in here about Section 153 dot 049 that applies to accessory structures, and that's the section of the ordinance that deals with zoning permits. And really what this is saying, in order to have the keeping of chickens and any structures associated with the chickens approved, you're gonna have to submit a site plan. And then there's also language that's provided on the application, so that's, you know, would be reviewed by the staff, it would be part, part and partial of the approval. So it's not just, you can have chickens, oh, and you can have an enclosure, no, it's, the enclosure is located here, the enclosure is this size, and the permit would be conditioned on it being built as proposed. So you say you're gonna do this, that's the challenge, without a, without an approval.
Right. And the coop, chicken coop would have to have its own permit, so that's where we would go and verify setbacks and make sure everything meets our current code.
Yep. And then, you know, we've got language in there too about noise and odor, and, and a reference to the require, you know, the provisions of the noise ordinance that would, would apply, and, which is our existing ordinance. And that's essentially it. And that's a quick overview of it, but, you know, just in, and I know we felt this way nine months ago when we looked at it, it's just with the, the, I hate to say push, but the movement towards having sort of locally sourced produce and, and food items, and really in the environment we are too, with, with things cost. You know, it just seems, maybe, I think you could argue that it's a little unusual for it to be allowed within municipalities in the area and not allowed in the unincorporated areas of the county. So it's really bringing it to your attention and getting some direction from you, if you want.
Okay. Open it up for questions?
So would that, that mean that, that houses that have been like grandfathered in because of, I guess, the amount of time that they've been, been there, they wouldn't be able to have that?
Well, yeah, they would be, and, and we really wouldn't have any grandfathering related to the chickens, so it may be a case where someone has them, and it just, you know, may not be in line with the current.
Right.
Language in the zoning ordinance.
They have to get, they have to make sure that they get in compliance, if they have them and we didn't know about it, they have to get in compliance with the regulations.
So they, they would really be like, just like a new applicant.
Okay.
Yeah.
But under R2, they're permitted and there's no restrictions.
It doesn't change anything.
You can have however many you want, we, the coop would still have to need setbacks, but you could, they could free-range, you could have roosters.
And do they, in R2, do they have to get a, a permit before they get them, or have a site?
They should get, they should get a, a permit for their coop, but they don't have to go through this other checklist.
These would just be conditions.
Any, yeah, any accessory structure by the zoning code should get a, a zone permit, and that's where we would check setbacks.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Katie, is there a size limit on the size of the coop?
We did not put a size limit in the coop.
Okay. There is a, a state law now that says agricultural buildings are exempt from taxes. Would this be considered an agricultural building under that, and, or how would it would, would that be excluded? And we might need to talk with the auditor about that, but.
I was gonna say, I'd have to ask, ask her.
But, you know, agricultural buildings are now exempt. And the, the other thing I've got, this would apply probably more so on the lake than anywhere else, but you use the term front yard and backyard.
I just made notes on the.
And if you've got a driveway coming up to the front of your house at the lake and the.
I think we need to address the lake, as in, do you want the coops?
Cause the way you, the way it was proposed, they would be facing the lake.
Or the lake, but do you, on the lakeside, do you want to change that location?
And I had, I had to check the definition, and I didn't do that, the definitions in the zoning ordinance, but our use of the term rear yard probably is defined in relationship to the road, right? Front yard, rear yard, side yard?
No.
I, I did.
And so your driveway, it primarily on lake property, comes up to the front of the house.
That is, yes.
If you required it to be at the rear of the house, then it would be between the house and the lake.
That's right. Yeah. So we may need to change that language, so that on the lake, they're actually considered front yard, not rear yard, cause then they would be at the lakeside. So we may need to, to figure out the verbage for that.
Cause like, I, I know up around us on Lake Greenwood, a lot of people face their house toward the lake.
They do.
Too, so, yeah, so.
And then we, then we have some environments on the lake that are kind of more similar to a traditional neighborhood, where, I don't know, it may be questionable how appropriate it would be to have.
Just easier to answer those questions now than they are after you try to implement.
Yeah, I think you're, yeah.
That's right.
But I'm thinking it kind of, it's kind of a diverse type of, like, built environment on the lake, and so in some cases, yeah, and in some cases, it might be a little bit of a problem in the front yard. We probably need to do some thinking on that, come up with something kind of creative, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Do, do some more draft work and, and see what you can come up with. I, I do find it somewhat illogical that, I, I know the city of Newberry and the town of Whitmy, I don't know about the town of Prosperity, allow chickens inside the city, but somebody could have five acres and not be able to have chickens on them, that, that just doesn't compute in my mind. But I, I wanna do it in a, in an appropriate manner that we can cover as many bases as we can as we go into it and not rush into something that, that's gonna cause us a hardship.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll think on that yard, I think it's.
Yes, sir, Reverend Scott.
So you're not gonna allow no roo- roosters at all?
R2?
We ain't had trouble to, if you allow roosters.
It might violate the noise.
That's right. Well, we used to live, my neighbor had one, and that thing started about 3:30 in the morning. Anybody else? Any questions?
They're tearing it up doing how it flips, they won't know what to do.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. Think it's a great start, I do think we need to get some of these answered, and, and I do think there's a happy compromise for everybody. Okay? All right. Next is discussion of the pro- proposed FY 2024-25 budget.
Yes, sir. There was, you got a very long quorum. I know we're kind of tied on time, so I just, there was one thing that I wanted to ask y'all. What you thought, cause we've gotten some pretty good direction from you all Monday, and this is really an, an response to that, and we just get to the classes, to the right place. Okay. And this is a, this is a spreadsheet that is a, a look at the use of fund balances proposed in the budget. You know, we had talked Monday about, a couple days ago, about how it's really customary for local governments, and it's, it's sort of, it's been the custom here too, in Newberry County, to where you may have a budgeted or planned use of fund balance that's used to balance the budget, but in most cases, you finish the year with an actual contribution. You know, instead of your expenditures exceeding revenues, your revenues exceed expenditures, and, you know, you finish the year in, in, in positive territory. And a lot of that is just a function of, you know, when you put the budget together, and I know y'all are proponents of this, you wanna be conservative and, and, and careful when you're doing that, and so you conservatively project the revenues, and then you, you know, we're fairly conservative on the other end of the spectrum with your expenditures. And so oftentimes, that doesn't play out, you know, as planned, which is a good thing, you know, you, you just have taken a conservative approach. And so I guess this was a spreadsheet, just to show y'all maybe some approaches, and you, you may have, I'm sure you may have some other ideas about how this could be tackled. This was just my staff at, at, initially. But you know, right now, in the proposed general fund budget, we've got a 1.25 million dollar use of fund balance, and you know, it's a, I don't wanna misquote it, it's a 40.3 million dollar proposed general fund budget. So I guess the, there were four categories, I, I guess I looked at it, at steps y'all could take to kind of bring, you know, the revenues and expenditures more in alignment. And those are revenues, personnel services, which is, are gonna be salaries and fringe, non-personnel, which are, you know, like your operating lineups, like utilities, insurance, things like that, and then capital, you know, where we have significant purchases that are in a capital section. And so I guess the first suggestion I had to y'all, or was gonna make to y'all, is that you consider a property tax increase. And, you know, I know, you know, we have to be kind of prudent with that, and so I just, I wanted to show you a couple of options in terms of an increase, you know, what would a mill of tax, what's it projected to generate, what would two mills generate, what would three mills generate? And I just kind of split the difference and used two mills, just in that center, middle territory. And so if you went up two mills on property tax, what that would translate into is for an owner-occupied home that's valued for tax purposes at $100,000, a two-mill increase would be $8. You know, which, and I think most of us kind of think in terms of bills, cause we pay most things on a monthly basis, you would be talking about less than a dollar a month, you know? That's on a $100,000 home. If you're, you know, $200,000 home, you're talking about $16, so a little bit more than a dollar a month. And you can see how it, $500,000, for example, there you're talking about a $40 bill, so that's what, close to $3.50 a month is what that translates into. So a, a millage increase would be a way of kind of closing the gap, and you can see, if it's two mills, then the gap you're, you're, the extent that you're whittling it down by is close to $350,000, based on the estimated value of a mill. The next section is this personnel section, and we've got five positions right now at the county that are vacant. And just for, for clarification, well, so I'll show them three of them in the spreadsheet, because two of them are operator positions in roads and bridges. And I think y'all felt, and I mean, I totally agree with you, on Monday, that, you know, we, we've made sacrifices over the years in roads and bridges where we pared staff down, and we're probably in a position now where that would be a major hit for them, to lose two positions. And so what you see on the screen are three of the five vacant positions, including the operator positions. And just to clarify too, cause when you see that, people start thinking salaries, that's the all-in cost of the employee. I mean, that's salary, that's FICA, workers' comp insurance, health, retirement, you know, it's, it's all in there. And so I guess what I was gonna propose to y'all, and you may feel differently, but if you wanted to, cause some of the use of fund balances, okay, well, how can we reduce the budgeted use of fund balance? Some of it is, how can we feel comfortable with the budgeted use of fund balance? Instead of eliminating the positions, what I'd recommend to y'all is that we just take our time with it. And what if we just used, and realistically, I don't think you could say mid-year, I'd say the first three quarters of fiscal year, so pretty much where we're at now, you know, the end of, of March of 2025, and just see, you know, what is the actual collected mill, value of a mill? Is it the 174, 390? Or, you know, is the value of a mill higher than that? We think it has the potential to be higher than that, but we didn't wanna make a recommendation to y'all that we, the collected mill value isn't that, and we fall short of budget. How are the rest of our expenditures tracking? And so if we just kind of slow-roll those three positions, we think at this time next year, we'd be in a better position to, to give you an accurate, accurate picture on where we stand financially. So if you did that and you delayed those, now this shows all four quarters, but if, you know, we get to a point where, hey, this thing is as tight as we thought it might be, or, or close to as tight, well then, you know, we could just, we could not fill the positions for the entire fiscal year. And so if you did that, that's $162,133. The next section is non-personnel, and again, these are like operating expenditures, and you know, right now in the draft budget, 4% of payroll is budgeted in a non-personnel line item, and specifically, it's in the non-departmental budget. And the whole, you know, the practice that we've had at the county is that y'all approve a percentage of payroll for increases, it's budgeted in the non-personnel section, and then council of later date approves the distribution of the money. But the first step is, is the, the allocation for money, or the allocation for raises. And so this 57243 is in there, and that's the all-in cost of the, of 4% of payroll, so you've got all of the fringe items, taxes, retirement contributions, you know, the whole nine yards. Council indicated Monday night, or, yeah, Monday night, that, you know, we really are struggling right now in a, like, hyper-competitive environment for recruiting and retaining law enforcement officers. And we're facing the same thing with driver operators, particularly those that have CDL. I mean, it's just, it's a tough market right now, and, and we're not gonna be able to compete head-to-head, but we can do our best to try to be more competitive, and y'all expressed an interest in doing that. And, you know, you may prefer a different percentage, but this 172, 667 would be a 10% increase for our law enforcement officers and our driver operators, and that's the all-in cost, so that's got.
Not 10%?
About 2%, I'm sorry.
Maybe I miss her. Maybe I misheard.
It's right on the screen, don't pay attention to me, just look at the screen.
Maybe I misheard.
Yeah.
You sound like ten to me.
It is.
Yeah.
We'll let it get out.
One, one billion. And so that's the all-in cost, it's a hundred seventy-two, six sixty-seven, uh, so it's got all the fringe built in. So that's the first item, the next item, and you'll notice too, that green reduces fund balance, uh, red or pink or whatever color that is, I might give a color, increases fund balance, so it's, you know, uh, it would increase the number, I won't say good or bad. Uh, so, the next item is the transfer station, and, you know, there are a number of things we do out there, and one of them is that we accept, uh, yard trash limbs, and then those are ground annually, and we've got, you know, mulch piles out there. And, uh, one of the things we've talked about was considering potentially eliminating that. And there was funding of eighty thousand dollars in the line item where we budgeted that in the transfer station budget for mulch, for grinding. And the whole idea there was that if we just continued the service effective January first, we would need to fund it for half the year, and probably be prepared, maybe for some people, to say, hey, this is last call, I'm gonna take as many limbs and things out there as I can. So it wasn't, we didn't split the number in half there. Uh, what we spent in the current fiscal year is a hundred twenty-three thousand, so to provide the same level of funding, we already had eighty in there, uh, if we add the mulch grinding back in and fund it at the level that we initially did, you would need to add forty-three thousand dollars back in, and y'all expressed some reservations about discontinuing it and the need to do some additional research, and I didn't want that to hold up the budget process for y'all, and that's why I was proposing that that just be added back in and, um, you know, we'll address some of the, uh, concerns and research items y'all asked us to do. The next two expenditures, and you'll notice these are green, are in contingency, and that's, we've got a contingency line item in that division of the budget, the fifteen thousand division, and then we've got a capital one-time purchases. And both of those are funded at these two levels, two hundred thousand dollars and fifty thousand dollars. I wasn't proposing here to y'all, because I know that you like to have the ability, and I think that makes a lot of sense, when things pop up unexpectedly, and they will, I mean, things happen, that we have the ability to deal with them, and it's nice too, when you don't have to go through a formal revision of the budget, because that's, it can be a long drawn-out process and you've got an immediate need to address. But the reason I showed this as green or a reduction here is that really, it's no different than pulling it out of the budget and amending the budget to then deal with an unexpected expenditure. It's sort of like, either way, it's a one-time use of money, or a use of one-time money, it's just, it's in the budget or out in the budget. So I thought, unless y'all disagree, that you could kind of look at it that way, like, that's not a, um, unreasonable use of fund balance, because it's only, you're only breaking the glass in case of an emergency. And of course, it comes to y'all before we do it, so, um, I put it in the, in the, I guess you could say, green column. And you can see, so that's two hundred seven thousand dollars worth of non-personnel, uh, adjustments or justifications. And then the final one is, you know, y'all had asked us to look at, um, uh, our exposure, I guess, to, uh, fighting elec- electric vehicle fires and needing to be prepared to do that. And so, you know, initially, or in the current version of the budget, we've got forty-nine thousand there, that would buy eleven, uh, and the manufacturer calls it a turtle nozzle, but it's essentially, you know, a way of getting the, um, the water under the vehicle, because you know, the, the batteries are there at the undercarriage, and, and the vehicle's mounted on top of it, where you could fight the fire from underneath, and we've got eleven departments, and that was the idea of having eleven. What we recommend to you here that you consider is instead of buying eleven, that we buy three, that we would strategically place mo- most likely at Friendly, uh, Little Mountain and Bush River, so that they would be able to very quickly respond to an EV fire on the interstate. But then we also, in addition to the nozzles, uh, fund three blankets, which is another way of, you know, where you're suffocating the elec- electro- uh, electric vehicle fire, so it would be getting both items, but only getting it for three stations. And if you did that, it's a twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollar expenditure, so that would reduce, it could be viewed as reducing the use of fund balance by twenty-six-five. And so when you take all those steps, which together add up to, in terms of additional revenue and reduced expenditures, or justifications, things you could feel comfortable using fund balance for, they total, uh, seven hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars, and it gets your use of fund balance maybe down to something y'all would be a little more comfortable with, which is five thirty-three, three eighty-one. And di- didn't even get into the fact that, you know, and this is looking at the last five years, we normally spend about nine percent of our total budget, personnel, non-personnel, the whole nine yards. It doesn't even get into the fact that typically, we don't spend a hundred percent of our budget. And I say typically, we, we rarely do that unless we have a very unusual project that is unbudgeted and, uh, and we pursue it, so, um, you know, you start talking about not spending, only spending ninety-eight percent of payroll, which I think is pretty conservative, uh, maybe only ninety-eight percent of non-personnel, well now we're getting that fund balance zero and a half.
To, to a, no effect on the fund balance as a, as a whole.
Yeah, yes sir.
Questions?
And that, that was with a two mill.
Yes, with a two mill increase, you know, but it, it's, um, you know, I know anytime you're impacted by property impact, property tax increase, you're impacted, a two-mill tax increase, the impact on the individual versus what it, it does for the county and county operations are, are, are two, you know, very different things. But I know anytime there's a tax increase, it's not, you know, you're, you're impacting people, so you have to definitely take that into account. And again, it would be on a hundred thousand dollar home, you're talking about eight bucks, two hundred thousand, sixteen dollars, a five hundred thousand dollar home, which would be, you know, a nice home, um, you know, you're talking about forty dollars.
You have a question for anyone? Alright, we'll take this off for information, I'm assuming we'll revisit again on the seventeenth, uh, in preparation for first reading. Alright, next on our agenda is an executive session for some contractual matters, is there a motion that we go into executive session? Motion by Mr. C., seconded by Mr. Reader, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously of those present. Uh, we will be moving into executive session and be back as quickly as possible.
Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Sees. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Newberry County Council met in executive session for the aforementioned reason. No action was taken as a result of that executive session. As a motion we adjourned the five o'clock meeting. Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Sees. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. We have adjourned the five o'clock meeting. We apologize for the delay in starting this meeting. It's just some matters that we had to address. So we will call our regular scheduled county council meeting to order. And I have the invocation and pledge. Tonight would you stand with me as we pray and say our pledge? Father, we just thank you for an opportunity to be together to do your business. Father, I pray that you would grant each of us wisdom and discernment. Lord, that you would lead us and guide us with your will. Father, you would show us what is best for the people of Newberry County and you would guide us to do the right thing. Lord, I just ask that you would fill our hearts with the wisdom that you grant us, Lord, and that you would be glorified through everything we say, do, and every decision we make. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. all.
It is certainly good to see you all here tonight. Item one on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda, which consists of the work session meeting on March twenty, the budget, I'm sorry, the county council meeting on March twenty, and the budget work session of March twenty, March twenty-six. Unless there is objection, we'll take that as one item. With that objection, is there a motion that we approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Sees, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, the motion carries unanimously. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion we adopt, the agenda is published, motion by Mr. Sees, second by Mr. Reverend Curry, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, motion carries unanimously to adopt the agenda. Item number three on our agenda is a presentation of the FY twenty twenty-two twenty-three audit, with David, I'm not even gonna try that, of Malden and Jenkins, you can tell us what it is.
It's Eusefara.
That's, that's how I was gonna say it.
Yeah. No, it's, it's a strange one, for sure. Well, I hope you all are doing well tonight. So I am David Eusefara with Malden and Jenkins, I was the, or am the manager on the Newberry County Audit, and I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight, so I'll just kind of briefly go through the audit and our, what we found and everything, and give you guys a chance to ask me any questions. So if we want to turn our pages to page one, you'll find our independent auditor's report, where we disclose our opinions on the operations of the county. You'll notice everything except for discreetly presented component units is unqualified, and unqualified just means clean. Qualified means there's something that was wrong, and with the component units, all that is, is that the library, which is a component unit of the county, was not, did not issue their financial statements in time for the issuance of this, so we have to give a qualified opinion for those, but it has no reflection on the county operations. It's strictly for the component units. And if we want to flip on over to page six, page six is the management discussion and analysis, this, if, if you're gonna read one section of the, of the report, I would advise this be the one, it kind of, it gives financial highlights, it goes deeper into the operations of the county, it kind of compares year to year, so I think it's a really good tool for seeing the, the status of the county and how it's performing. But if we want to dive more into the statements themselves, so page nineteen, if we could flip to that, we have the statement of net positions, the government-wide, this is the full accrual accounting, we have the government-wide, and then the fund level statements, this is just, this includes capital assets and long-term debt on the, on the statement of net position, that is not included at the fund level, but other than that, it's gonna be very similar to that, so if we want to flip on over to page twenty-one, that'll get us to the fund level statements, which I'm sure the general fund is what everyone's interested in. So for the general fund this year, we noted about sixteen million in cash at six thirty twenty-three, about one million in receivables related to taxes, leases, and other accounts. Amounts due from other governments at year-end was about five hundred thousand, and then you have your liabilities, accounts payable, which is about a million, and amounts due to other governments was around two point eight million. And when you add all those up, you end up with a net position, which is just assets minus liabilities, you end up with a, or not a net position, sorry, a fund balance of fourteen point two million, thirteen point three million of which is unassigned for the general fund. If we want to flip over to page twenty-three, that'll be the income statement for the year. General fund had thirty-two million in revenues for the year, twenty-three million related to taxes, with twenty-eight million in expenditures, leading to four million, or three point five million in revenues over expenditures. There were transfers out of the general fund to help with the other funds of two point two million dollars, which, after all of that, led to an increase of about one point four million in fund balance for the general fund. And then you can see all the, the major funds on there as well, so the miscellaneous special revenue fund, capital projects fund, the debt service fund are all major funds, and then we have the aggregate, non-major governmental funds, if you were interested in looking at those numbers. And then the rest is, the rest of the statements are, just kind of, the next page would be a reconciliation to the government-wide statements, it's gonna talk about the long-term debt and capital assets, and then you have your custodial funds, which is the magistrate, clerk of court, and the school district, that, that just shows the financial standing of those. And if we flip, then we have, after that, it goes to the notes, which just kind of supplement the statements themselves. If, if you would like to go through any specific ones of those, we can, but in the meantime, if we want to flip to the compliance section, which is, starts on page eighty-two. So page eighty-two has our audit report on internal control over the financial reporting and compliance on other matters. So what we've, what we disclose here is the findings with, within the county, and we've noted two findings, which, if you flip the page to eighty-four, you'll notice, we talk more about them, these findings include the general ledger, the, the general ledger system, that is, and the inability of it to roll accounts forward, and just the, the system in general, and I know that the county is working on getting a new system for that, so hopefully within next year or the year after that, finding should be resolved, once that system is implemented. And then on the next page, the, the next finding you'll find is the segregation of duties. That's a, that was a repeat from last year and the years before, that basically just has to do with the county not, you'll find it a lot with governments across the state, is, it's hard to hire the manpower to have enough employees to implement proper segregation of duties, and it's, it just seems to be the, the case here, where the proper segregation of duties are not in place for the, the controls, so that's, that was a finding again this year. And if we could flip back to the prior page, that, that does it for the findings. Typically, the county does not have a single audit, which, a single audit would be the, if there's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars expended in federal funds or more, with the ARPA money coming in the, this past, these past two years, they, there was a need for typically what would be a single audit, but because the county doesn't usually do single audits, we were able to do an alternate compliance engagement, which we discuss in this federal awards section, and through that, we found no findings with the spending of the ARPA money. So that really does it for the audit report. I did want to keep it brief for you guys, if you have any questions, or you want me to dive into anything else, just let me know.
I, I have a couple of questions, does anybody else have questions? I don't want to jump the gun in the air.
Has, has the finance committee received and, and gone over this yet, or is this the first time?
First time we've seen it.
Okay.
First time we've seen it.
That might be a good thing.
Absolutely.
For the finance committee to kind of look in it a little closer.
Yeah, I would, I, I would like to see us deep dive a couple of things, I, I was extremely concerned at the, at the findings, the segregation of duty, I, I wondered, did you, were you on tight when you did that?
Yes.
Is that a manpower issue, is that a workflow issue, or is it a combination thereof?
I would, I would say more manpower, just not having, like, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, I could get back to you more on this, but I think one of the issues was possibly bank reconciliations, going through the proper, proper channels of being prepared and then reviewed. I get, apologies if this was not one of the things, but for example, let's say, that, that could be one of the, if it's not being reviewed, that would lead to a segregation of duties finding, because it's this bank reconciliation that's being prepared by someone is not getting a proper review from someone else.
Okay, all right, so we can, we work together with him to get an answer for that, and then the one that kind of really took my breath is that we're doing depreciation on a ledger sheet, is that correct?
Um.
In Excel.
Oh, yes, yeah, the, the management point, yes, yeah.
Wow. In, in my background, depreciation is one of the hardest things to do that there is in something, and so we're doing that manually, that, that really, so I guess my question then flips to Jeff, and that is, is that something that's included in the new software that, that will do that automatically for us? If not, yeah, if not, that's something we gotta have, because that, even programming depreciation is difficult, much less, I can't imagine manually trying to calculate that in the, in the air or field, that, that one, I had no idea, and that shocked me, so I guess that's.
That functionality failed to.
Good, good, because you can get in a lot of trouble over that. All right, I'm done, that was, those were the things I was really concerned about.
Can you mention something about the library?
Yes, so the lab, the county has three component units, because they, they offer financial assistance to these, and oversee these, these facilities, it's the library, the Westview Behavioral Health Center, and the Newberry County Hospital. Now, per GAZB, we, or the county is required to present those, their financials on the county statements, and the library's financial statements for this, the six thirty year-end was not ready, and because of that, we had to issue that qualified opinion. So again, no reflection on the county itself, just more so on the component units.
Anyone else? I do think a deep dive is in order on some of this stuff, to figure out what's, what's going on with some recommendations to come out as well. All right, thank you so much, sir.
Absolutely.
Excellent presentation. Item number four is a proclamation declaring April twenty-eighth and May fifth is Soil and Water Stewardship Week in Newberry County. We have a proclamation that says, whereas healthy and fertile soil and clean water is the lifeblood of nutrition and substance to, throughout the world, and soil conservation is a benefit to everyone, whereas effective conservation practices in sewer, soil, water, animal plants, and air can provide a rich standard of living, and whereas our survival and continued production of and access to quality food and water depends on robust management of diverse natural resources nationwide, where stewardship calls upon everyone to help conserve these precious resources to ensure their prosperity for generations to come, now be it proclaimed, the county council of Newberry County, that the week of April twenty-eighth and May fifth, twenty twenty-four, shall be Soil and Water Stewardship Week in Newberry County, in recognition of the importance of stewardship to maintain clean and high-quality soil and water, which protects and preserves the health and well-being of Newberry County and its residents. Is there a motion that we approve this resolution? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Reader, is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. A resolution number zero one dash two four, we do not have a copy of, to designate the month of April as twenty twenty-four as fair housing month within the county of Newberry, is there a motion that we approve that resolution as well? Unread, motion by Mr. Reader, second by Mr. Sees, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, and opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number zero four zero one two zero two four, which is an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to the zoning ordinance number twelve dash two four dash zero one, as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number oh six dash one one dash one six, and codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishes zoning classifications and districts, as so as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling seventy-six hundred point seven six acre designated as T S, TMS number seven four one dash four five, from R S single family residential to R two rural. Katie is coming forward, this is the first reading, and I believe I saw in our notes that it was approved by the planning.
It was, the property owner has come in and asked to have his property rezoned from R S single family residential to R two rural. At one time, this piece of property was conjoined with seven forty-one ten, and was zoned R two, and then, for whatever reasons, prior homeowner changed it to R S, so he's asking to go back to R two rural again for a manufactured home. Our current comprehensive plan identifies this property as transitional, which would support this rezoning. We had no one come and speak in opposition of the rezoning, and it was a unanimous vote from planning commission to recommend the rezoning.
Any questions? Okay, yes.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, isn't there a minimum?
Yeah, so, so if it was to be rezoned, he'd have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance.
And also, when I was doing my research on that, it looks like that piece of property falls outside of the Newberry County line, is actually in Lexington County, by the GSI tax map.
Yeah.
I don't know if, at one time, it used to be connected to those other properties, but it doesn't even touch the red line.
He pays Newberry County taxes.
I, I, yeah, I think it may be an issue with the GIS, and just the overlay of the, of the layers, and you've got a boundary file, and then you've got the tax part, I noticed the same thing when I looked at it.
I just want to make sure, because if we give them permission to go do that, and then it turns out to be Lexington County, we end up getting a lawsuit from the landowner in Lexington County, I hate for that to happen to us.
On the map that I see, that's different from the public GIS, the properties that's shaded kind of gray, that has no boundary lines, that's the, the Lexington County line, so it would be the last property in Newberry County, but, but we show it as Newberry County property, and, and taxes reflect that, he pays Newberry County taxes.
Was this, you know, we recently redrew some county lines between Newberry and Lawrence, and between Newberry and Richland, this was not in that?
That was not part of that.
But it could be in the future, because they were still working on this.
Yes.
And we, and we'll verify that, I think it's just an issue with the layers and the GIS, yeah, the boundary.
I saw that, that made me question.
That's a good catch, but you want to trust your local data rather than the web data, for sure.
Right.
Great points, both. Any other questions for Katie? Is there a motion this be first reading? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Reverend Curry, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise. Item number seven is an ordinance number oh four oh two dash twenty twenty-four, which is an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number one two two four oh one, as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number oh six one one dash one six, and codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishes zoning and classification and districts, as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling two point four four acres designated as TMS number four five seven dash nine, from general commercial to R two rural. Yes, ma'am?
So the owner of this property is Sadie's Hope, Inc., and they are asking to rezone the property to R two rural for the purposes of a boarding home. They are looking at a home for women who need somewhere to go to get back on their feet after abusive relation, relationships, and just somewhere to get them back going. So in our zoning code, it would require an R two rural zoning classification, and you see everything behind and to the left side is R two rural. The comprehensive plan does show this as development, so a boarding home does fit within that development classification. Planning commission was a unanimous, a unanimous vote to recommend rezoning. We had no, no one speaking in opposition, a neighboring property owner came in and asked some questions, but gave his full support for it.
Questions? Hearing none, there, this is to be scheduled to be first reading, is there a motion this be first reading? Motion by Mr. Hip, second by Mr. Sees, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise. County council may take any action following the executive session on matters discussed during executive session. Anybody have a matter to take up? Hearing none, appointments, I would like to reappoint Mr. Louis Lee, longtime fire chief and state fire marshal, back to the Newberry County Water and Sewer Authority Board, please, so I make a motion to appoint Mr. Louis Lee. Second by Mr. Sees, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, Mr. Lee is unanimously appointed back to the Newberry County Water and Sewer Authority Board. and Sewer Authority Board. Item number 10 are public comments. We had several who signed up but struck their name off. It looks like Mr. Michael Tom is still on our list.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, council members. It's good to be here. I'd like to talk about the chicken ordinance. Right now, currently today, I have a neighbor who has an illegal chicken coop with several chickens, to include a hen that was just removed. And it's, it's quite a nuisance for us, and I live on the lake. And before I talk about that, I'd like to first talk about, there was a little discussion about what is right at back or front, or, so I'm looking at the Lexington County ordinance, and it's kind of interesting that they only allow four chickens. They want them in a coop with screening and odor control. Because if I complain, how do I justify odor? How do I measure odor? You can't. So it's, it's, you know, what I can smell, I'm sure everybody smells something different. I mean, we probably all walked into the kitchen and said to our wives, what, what are you smelling? What is that? And the same thing probably would occur with chickens. The second part of this is, with this illegal chicken coop in my backyard, I mean, in the yard, my neighbor, his chicken coop, he, he dug a ditch in his front yard where the chicken coop is, and the ditch runs into a culvert that runs down into the lake. And I've been looking at that, and I've been working with a biologist from DNR, and I've contacted, contacted them. And I sent this, I don't know if you got this or not, showing there's the ditch, and, and that's what happens. And here's the water leaching into the lake. And what's the cause and effect of that? And here's the material all running into the lake, right? And what that causes is an excessive algae bloom, okay? This is going to kill the lake. It's gonna kill the fish. It's gonna kill everything. And what you're gonna wind up with, and I sent a little narrative out to everybody, you know, lakes are born and lakes die, okay? We don't want that. We have a tremendous fishing resource in Newberry County. We want to keep that, that industry going. We don't want people coming here, going to those fishing tournaments. So where this is right now, I contacted the biologist, and she's gonna get back to me, and we're gonna try to determine what is the correct distance a chicken coop should be from the lake, and, and also the contour of the property. If there's a contour that's going down and there's runoff, well, we should not allow that. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you so much. We'll certainly take all that in consideration as we move forward. We've got a lot more research, a lot more to look at.
I'll be here with, with, I'm part of Lake Murray Watch, and as well as Lake Murray Association. We, we're trying to, it's interesting, you said be good stewards of, of soil and water, and this is part of it, and our associations want to enforce the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. All right. Comments and requests from our county administrator?
No, sir, I really don't have, have a lot for y'all tonight. Just really appreciate your guidance and direction during the budget process, and I guess related to the process. We've had a couple of work sessions now. We had a really brief discussion earlier this evening. One thing I wanted to ask, ask you is, in the budget calendar for this year's process, we identified April 17th, which is our next meeting, as first reading, but then had a break, and didn't have second reading and public hearing until the second meeting in May, which is May 15. Would council have an objection to us pushing first reading back to May 1? That way, you do, you wouldn't have the gap, you know, the one meeting gap between first and second reading. It also would give us an opportunity on the 17th, maybe to have a little more discussion on some of the follow-up items that, that y'all had asked us to look into before you do first reading. So you could do that on the 17th, and then on May 1, you could have some discussion at the 5:00 PM meeting, and then first reading during your six.
I don't, I, I'm seeing five head nods, so I think we're good to do it that way. Yep.
All right. We'll just plan on that. Thank you.
Okay. Comments or requests from council? Mr. Hip?
I have none, other than, again, the budget process is going very well this year. I like the spreadsheets, the flexibility to, to take a view of what the budget's like when you add or subtract line items. That's not something we've had that visibility and, and flexibility of in the past. And I just, I think you and the staff deserve a huge compliment on that.
Absolutely. Mr. Sees?
Same thing. Great job providing those scenarios, that if we change this or do this, how we could keep from taking so much from the general fund, you know, balance, and making it work for the county and get the budget through. So thanks for all the hard work from staff. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Mr. Reed?
I appreciate the same, and then give us opportunity to spread everything out, so we can take our time to make, you know, those necessary decisions. I appreciate the job you've all done.
Reverend Curry?
Everything's fine.
I would, I think I told you the other night, it's most comprehensive budget I've ever seen in 30-something years around this county. And so I, I'm very appreciative. I love the, like you said, the, the things that we could move around in there. And I think, I think we're very close to a very reasonable budget that understands balancing the, the needs of the county and, and the needs of the citizens. So thank you so much. Future meetings. Newberry County Public Safety Committee will meet on May 20. Newberry County Council Work Session on April 17, and Newberry County Council Meeting on April, at 5. County Council Meeting, April 17 at 6. County Council Work Session, May 1 at 5. County Council, scheduled meeting on May 1 at 6, not 5, yeah. Gotcha. And then Newberry County Economic Development Committee meets May 6 at 6:00 PM. Any other meetings that we need to announce? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Sees takes Mr. Shealy's place. Mr. Reader is the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. We stand adjourned. Thank you so much for being here tonight.